Chair Cloud.
Present.
Chair Lawrence. Chair Miranda, I mean, Member Miranda.
Present.
Member Smith. Member Reland.
Here.
Member McGee.
Present.
Now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Lawrence. We'll go to the approval of the agenda staff. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, we do not.
And any commissioners, any changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Madam Chair. Chair Cloud. Oh, you can't vote, sorry. Vice Chair Lawrence. Member Miranda.
Yes.
Member Smith. Member Reland.
Yes.
Member McGee.
Yes.
Mostly passed.
Okay, the next matter is the approval of the minutes from over
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we postpone this approval. The minutes as they're posted online today still have another number of minor errors. And I would like to go through them and bring them back to the commission at the next meeting. Motion to postpone until the next meeting.
Roll call.
Actually, Madam Chair, could I address the commission briefly?
Yes.
Thank you. So under the Open Meetings Act, we're supposed to either approve, deny, or amend the minutes. And so I would suggest that perhaps the motion could be to reject or deny the minutes and amend them at a different date.
So moved the motion to reject the minutes and revisit amended minutes at the next meeting.
Member Reland.
Yes.
Member Lawrence.
Yes.
Chair Cloud.
I don't vote.
That's right. Member Smith. Member Miranda.
Yes.
And Member McGee.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
The next matter is the approval of findings, facts, and conclusions of law on case number 2023-7653, vacation of a 44-foot-wide public right-of-way and a 38-foot-wide public right-of-way. There any changes to those findings and conclusions by staff or commission? Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Member McGee.
Yes.
Member Miranda.
Yes.
Member Smith. Vice Chair Lawrence.
Yes.
Member Reland.
Yes.
Thank you.
There is no old business, so we'll move to new business. And the new business is the request to recommend revisions to land development code.
Chair Cloud, members of the commission, we are pleased to bring phase one of the Land Development Code to the Planning Commission. This represents several, one of several phases, and I will let Matt Goble, our consultant, go through the scope and amount of changes regarding this. This will not be the so-called last bite of the apple. This will be coming back to the Planning and Commission again, once the, any amendments we've received or changes and we have a final draft be presented to the commission once again. Look forward to your input. Mr. Goble.
Any comments from commissioners? Go ahead and proceed. Thank you.
Testing, testing. Does that work better? Yeah. Oh.
Yes, sir.
You've heard all that earlier stuff before. But we have a redline version of the draft from September. It is accompanied by a disposition report that talks about the, all the changes and all the relocations. We have highlighted some things in yellow that are, we would consider them beyond housekeeping in the substantive realm. And so what I'm going to do now in this part of the presentation, walk you through all of those yellow highlights from the disposition table. And we, we think they're relatively straightforward, but these are probably the areas where you're going to want to concentrate the bulk of your, your conversation and feedback. They're going to be in order in which they appear in the draft. And so the first place where we have some yellow text in that disposition report is in the review and approval procedures, Article 143. And we simply changed the name of special use to conditional use. So we now have a conditional use approval, which is consistent with many other communities.
Tell me, as a non-professional, what's the significance of moving from one to the other?
I think it's semantics. I really, I think it's semantics. I think it's, it's more common in the planning community. It's more common in the development community. The more substantive changes start to get in with Article 143, the zoning districts. And so we've got the permitted height increases that we've been talking about where across the board in, in the residential districts and the non-residential districts, there's been a height increase proposed of two to three feet. So it's up to 26 feet in residential and it's up to 38 feet in non-residential. The general discussions about this have been to accommodate modern building practices and especially green building practices. And architects can get into the more, more details of this than I can, but you know, as you start to get into the needs of greater ventilation and duct systems, for example, that might require higher ceilings with inside a building. Outside a building that might require, you know, greater heights would allow better use of features like the roof, to do a green roof or to do some type of patio. To make use of that space. So these are really intended to accommodate developments that you already have a lot of requests for in Santa Fe. And this was a particular request that came from technical advisory working group. So Commissioner Miranda, I don't know if you wanted to jump in on that piece and provide some background as well.
Yeah, certainly. It's definitely something that was talked about in the TOG and I can say, you know, two feet doesn't necessarily seem like a big deal. It certainly is. It's not just an issue though of green energy, it's, or green building practices, it's also an issue of cost. So the essentially staying within modern energy codes and staying within that height often means going to a fairly low ceiling or going to methods of making structure as thin as possible is often much more. We've saying in my own practice, we've done that quite a bit, whether it be a post-tension slab or using glue lamb beans or any number of things that are more expensive, thinner to stay inside this height. So the move should ease of construction costs, but it also makes it much easier to work within modern energy codes. It's not even just the green building code, but the, the energy code that people Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm actually going higher in some of these pitches.
I think very much so. Yeah, I think all the dimensional standards are still open for a broader, more holistic look as part of phase two, phase three. That was one that was, you know, top of mind, I think, for a lot of people on the working groups. And so we decided to push that one forward, but definitely we're going to relook at all those. Moving on, the, the high-density residential districts, this is where we just changed the nomenclature, the name, so that the, the density that's implied by the district numeral is now, we change the standard so that density is now permitted by right, rather than having to go through and getting a development plan approval for anything over 10 dwelling units per acre. It says governing body there. I think sometimes the, or maybe all the time, the planning commission is who approves that development plan. But again, it's just taking away that development plan requirement. The Parks and Open Space District is new. This is the one probably biggest change to the district's lineup. This was just to reflect what some people felt was a real glaring omission in the current lineup of districts to provide a zoning pool in the toolbox where you might want to designate Parks and Open Space separately from all the other districts and provide greater protections for those types of resources. This is another one that I think will be up for discussion as part of the overall review of the district lineup, part of the, the general plan. And we are, have already started talking with the general plan folks about this issue and about the need to consider it, because all the districts are updated. In the overlay zoning districts, we took out a couple that are not being used, have never been applied on the map. The residential suite hotel motel overlay and ecological resource protection. Y'all have other tools that can address these things. You've got use standards for residential suite hotels. You've got a lot of other standards to address ecological resources. So I, I think the city had recognized in the past that these weren't necessary tools or just cleaning up things that had not been. Airport road overlay. This was a district that in the past, when it was first created or sometime earlier, there were restrictions adopted that restricted the sale of alcohol. And according to anecdotes from people that were around when these were adopted, they were, they were a reaction to advertising that was primarily aimed at members of that community and they were trying to, to restrict the sale of alcohol for social and other reasons. There is a feeling today that those have maybe overreached and gone too far. And the sale of alcohol is preventing things like restaurants and food stores, cafes, and things that I actually might contribute to the vitality of that area. And so that particular set of restrictions is, is proposed to be removed. They also go beyond zoning. There are the types of things that you wouldn't typically see in a zoning ordinance and they get into, you know, business licensing and things. Moving into use regulations. We cleaned up the use table a lot in terms of its format and its definitions and things. There's a lot of opportunity to add new definitions moving forward. But the only ones we added so far are the ones that respond directly to the housing affordability issue we've heard a lot about in the community. We added missing middle housing types like duplex and triplex. In practice, the city of Santa Fe already allows these use types. So what we've done is really just codify current policy. But there was a lot of confusion by some applicants about whether or not the city allowed these uses just because of the way residential uses are defined. And so we called them out very specifically in the use table. And that should hopefully just provide encouragement to people to do more of that type of housing and just put more options out. Development and design article. The main change here, first of all, is landscaping and site design. We amended the standards for perimeter parking lot standards. Beefed up, beefed them up a little bit based on some, some stakeholder feedback. Off-street parking, there's a number of changes. Structurally, a lot of your parking requirements were separate from chapter 14 and they were back in an appendix. We integrated them into the main body of the document, which is a lot more user-friendly. But more substantively, we added more options for flexibility in how people meet their minimum parking. Their shared parking or off-street parking, et cetera, off-site parking could be used. You could submit a parking demand study, you know, to justify a reduced parking number as well. This is real common practice in most communities. Again, it's, it's been somewhat used already in Santa Fe, so it's not brand-new practice, but it's brand-new text to clearly authorize the use of parking alternatives. The draft separates bicycle parking requirements from, from car parking requirements. It really beefs up the bike parking requirements. There are their new ADA parking requirements specified in there. Those already applied, but we've clearly put them in the code to clarify that those federal requirements do kick in. And we've started the conversation about EV parking by including some basic requirements for EV spaces. You all saw the table of that at the last presentation. I think this is one that's going to continue to evolve. We're seeing a lot of countries, cities around the country think about different types of EV spaces and think about really how much they want the government to get involved in specifying which types of spaces are provided. Most communities are looking at requiring some space. It's just a question of do they require them to be fully built out, the wiring infrastructure, et cetera. So we've, we've started that. Again, I think that's going to continue to evolve as part of phase two. Signs. You had some content-based restrictions in there and we got rid of that, which you have to do under federal law. We've talked about that in prior meetings. There are opportunities to improve the signs as part of phase two, definitely, in terms of quality, et cetera. Be coming back to that. The big ticket item, I think, in the, in the draft so far has been the affordability incentives that have gotten a lot of positive feedback, a lot of different stakeholders. Santa Fe Homes Program has, we've got new affordability incentives that build on current Santa Fe Homes Program requirements. We've got updates that allow a higher level of density bonus and other incentives if you provide more units that meet the SFHP qualification standards. We actually have been working in the background on revising the text of these incentives. And if you would like, after this presentation, I can jump over to that file and show you how we have refined those. It's, it's a bit of a tricky methodology and so we've just been working on wordsmithing a lot, but we can show you what those look like. That's it. That's, that's the full list of yellow text on the disposition report. That's the full list of things that we consider substantive changes in the phase one draft. Everything else there is, is non-substantive. We, we think it's, it's not insignificant. It's, it's, it's all an improvement, but it's all in the category of consolidation, of eliminating redundancy, things like that. So that's the main, that's the meat of the presentation. The balance of this is all kind of looking forward and it's these slides that you've seen about phases two and three and the stuff we can do. But that's all to come. So I guess with your permission, I, I might just stop right there and see if there's any questions or further discussion about those pieces or would you like me to continue with the phase two? Again, okay. Oh, great. This is, this is the fun stuff. So phase two, first of all, looking at the zone districts. You know, we have an opportunity to, again, be a little bit more thoughtful and holistic and stepping back and thinking about, first of all, the new general plan and, and how that might change the map, the future land use map for Santa Fe. And so that's, that's coming down the road. In the meantime, however, you've got some districts that maybe just aren't necessary. Like, like that residential suite overlay that I mentioned, that's just not necessary. It's never been used. Well, some of these districts, like special purpose districts, they have been used, they're on the map, but you might just not need them. Like the hospital district and the shopping center district and business industrial park, they're, they're focused on particular land use types. And again, same thing with the residential suites. We have other tools to, to deal with those situations. And so we don't need special purpose zoning districts for them. And we didn't take them out in this exercise, this phase one, because we thought that went a little bit beyond our mandate. But this, this I think is low-hanging fruit for phase two. Some of the issues with districts start to get at overlays versus base districts. And when you think about Business Capital District and Historic, that's a good example. We want to revisit the boundaries of both of those. We think there's a real opportunity to simplify the code by rethinking Business Capital District. And it's, it's got a confusing and elaborate structure with like 17 townscape districts, each of which have defined design objectives. There's a lot of vague language there and a lot of those don't have standards and a lot of that overlaps with similar requirements in the Historic Code. So we have a real opportunity for some significant streamlining by thinking how those two things can be simplified. So that's not a, that's not a small lift, because there was a lot of effort put into BCD. So I think that's, that's going to be a working, working group task for us to But I think we can really, really achieve some value there. Mixed use. This is another place where the districts could be beefed up by, you know, most communities that we work in, they try to clarify scales of mixed use. Neighborhood mixed use like, like a corner store that could go into Tierra Contenta or maybe a more regional mixed use center somewhere, could be an old shopping center that's redeveloped. You know, you can have different scales of mixed use. You identify standards for upfront, you allow them by right. You don't have to patch together, you know, PUDs or some other negotiated tools to do mixed use. So we have a real opportunity there. That, that's going to be really informed by the general plan process as well. We're going to have to think through what, what of the district updates can be done in phase two and what's in phase three. And I, we had a great meeting again with those consultants and the city team. And I think we'll be having some more detail to come on, on how we propose to, to break those up. Just as a reminder, we're going to do another small assessment report, first quarter of 2025. That's going to revisit all these issues in more detail. And now that we're done with the phase one stuff, we can start in to get into the substance. We can clarify like which of these pieces are going to be phase two updates. Overlay districts, there's more stuff here, you know, reduce the number of overlays. Maybe we can think about tools to do that. Maybe we can work within the existing overlays, but just improve them. So maybe we can look at LINK. You know, LINK is a great tool. There's some great standards there. But maybe there are ways that we could improve its usability or maybe do, do a better jumpstart of, of some of the development that's intended in that area. LINK also has some good tools that might be considered as base standards elsewhere in the city. So we want to take advantage of all the good work that's been done. Use table. Again, I mentioned we cleaned it up, we reformatted it, but, and we added the missing middle housing types, but now we can go further. And we can start to think more creatively about new uses that might be allowed. More aggressive elimination of old obsolete uses. We need to rethink all those individual cells and where different uses are allowed. And are those, are those lists of use permissions consistent with the, with the district intent? And that's going to be a big exercise. That's, that's, I think we're going to rely a lot on the working groups for that, because the working groups really know Santa Fe. But you know, there's, there's all kinds of new stuff that's being done, like small-scale manufacturing is really exploding around. And that, that can be, that's very different than old-school industrial use. And that's very, that can be fine on a Main Street in a downtown if you control its impact. So those are the types of things that we, we should be looking at. There's going to be updates to, to regulations you've already got, like ADUs and short-term rentals and we'll be looking at those. You know, the list continues. Architectural design review. This is the time to relook at the point system. You'll have a point system in place that some people like and some people would like to replace with just base standards. There's merits to both. Now, maybe we keep the, the point system, but we recalibrate it with the points more, more, more carefully tailored to what they represent.
Who likes the point system?
I'm trying to be neutral. I assume that they're out there. No, we actually, we actually had several people say they like it. They like the creativity. And architects always say they like point systems, not all of them, but in theory, it's, it's a great idea. It's, you, point systems have to be cared for over time and you have to make sure that there's no loopholes. Because people are figuring out loopholes all the time. And so if you do a point system, I always say you should relook at that once a year and just see where the holes are. And it's, that hasn't been done. But you know, the, the extent to which you're requiring Santa Fe design styles outside the core areas is, is a big issue of top of conversation that a lot of people want to explore. And should we be mandating, you know, the traditional styles throughout the city when we're growing in different ways and different places? So I think that's a, that's, that gets into philosophy of, of, of design. And so we, we're going to have those conversations. There could be some sub, I think there are forms of that. Landscaping, let's get more water conservation in there. That can be much more aggressive. I think there's a big conversation about parking and most communities that we work in are reducing their parking requirements. In many places like their downtowns, they're eliminating parking requirements altogether. Some cities have gotten rid of it all, altogether. But we need to talk about it. Is, is Santa Fe ready for a step like? There's, there's a lot of stuff here that like the prairie dog standards that may have been adopted at a point in time to deal with a very important concern. It may not be as relevant or as important a concern today with new protections. So we'll just have to reevaluate if that's necessary. Big box. I mean, y'all have particular standards for a particular type of structure that's over a certain size. That can be integrated into more general design standards. And all the procedural stuff, you know, this is an opportunity now for us to be more creative and aggressive in thinking about, is our system in Santa Fe designed to separate the big projects from the small projects? And to allow us as planning commissioners and the governing body to focus on the big projects and maybe send the smaller ones down through staff and get them through more efficiently. So can be thinking about, are the approval criteria clear? Are we requiring the right level of detail and applications? ENN, need to rethink about that and could it be improved? We've heard some ideas from there. You know, some communities expedite certain projects that, that are meeting community goals. Y'all are doing that to an extent for affordable housing projects. Now we can maybe do that more broadly. Some administrative improvements might be outside the code. It might just be in other shop, you know, and how stuff goes through the system. But we can help identify the ones that are Oh, that's my, that's the last slide there. That's, it's, it's, it can look like a daunting list, but we, this is all very dual. And we, we have a plan for all this. And when you look at that phase one document, there's a ton of footnotes in there. One of the reasons it's so long is that we just have a lot of footnotes and paper trails. And a lot of that is phase two and phase, phase three suggestion. So we've already gotten feedback on these things. We've just been putting them in buckets. And so we have a very strong running So I think, you know, again, our first step is going to be that assessment report in the first part of the year. And I think that's going to be an opportunity to rebuild momentum for this. Because the, the phase one, you know, all the housekeeping stuff can be a bit of a slog. And, but we're going to get through it. And then we're going to have a renewed sense of, I think, interest by the working groups. Substance. I think that's all I happy to take questions.
Can we get a copy of those slides?
Very much so.
Thanks. Any questions?
Things that I'm sensing and put it that is that there is increasing pressure financial sourcing outside of New Mexico, capitalize and profit off attractiveness of Santa Fe and then over to other places. Leading to really an externalization of profit. All which I think attracts some immunity. Also thinking. It operates on its own basis. Is there a place in phase two and or phase three where that kind of analysis is done in favor certain kinds of investments and localism, if it's legal, versus external ownerships, whether it's protecting housing or S T Rs or your name. I see communities, I'm from Vermont, losing control, absolutely losing control of their ability.
No, interesting question, and I know communities are exploring that around the country. Zoning typically doesn't focus on issues of ownership, focuses on physical development, is on creating a place. I think a lot of communities are recognizing that dynamic. And these big, you know, multinational corporations that are coming in and buying up thousands of homes. And they're they're trying to do things in their zoning codes that are, you know, aimed at maybe just controlling the physical impacts, some of those types of developments. Like in, I've done a lot of work in Texas, and they see a lot of these build to rent communities. Y'all have some of that, not as much as they do, where these developers come in and they get huge swaths of land. And they create these subdivisions that are in 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 look, there are subdivisions, but they're all just glommed on one lot. And there's really poor access, they're all chit, you know, crammed together. So communities are trying to think about what are the, what should the access standards be, you know, in these types of things? What should the open space requirements be? So how can we control the impacts when the banks come in or when these big developers come in and try to do these types? That's been the response so far. I'm not going to say that's all we can do. There there can be other things, but it's kind of still being explored. I I do think a lot of tools for incentivizing local development, local ownership are going to be outside the code. But they are very much conversations worth having. And I think that that those might grow out of some of the conversations we have at the code rewrite stage. And you you've got, I I've said this before, but the best thing about phase one was the working, the the development of those working groups and the building of trust among those groups. And and the fact that you set the stage for these conversations, because it's been really hard to bring a lot of those people to the table. That's that's going to continue. I think that's going to foster conversations even outside the code about topics.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Just in terms of if you could speak to any specific ways in phase two, we're wanting to go more towards a form based code.
I think I think form based codes should be used judicious. They should be used in places where the community wants to really focus on walkable urbanism. That's pretty infoming places where there's higher density. So I think, you know, we'll have to talk about where that is in Santa Fe. You know, we've heard about the corridors, highway corridors, and maybe it's serious road in some places, maybe it's a road. I'm not sure that's walkable urbanism, but we've heard people say they want form based tools. I think that means they want just more focus on design there, better design. But the form based term is just used by in different ways by different. There's going to be an education here about what do people mean when they say? I think more about form based tools is like in the link, maybe where you want to have. I think that's that's the potential kind of village concept that you're looking for there, where you're you're focusing much more on the relationship with the building to the street pattern and the pedestrian experience. So I I think it's going to be a conversation about where are those, where will those efforts make the most sense? And I say use it judiciously because form based codes, they can be very expensive to develop, like all the architecture designs and the physical reconnaissance kind of do. And they can be, they can be laborious to administer with a small staff. So you don't want to do that city. So you've got to think about where you want to use this. So I I that's a good thing to explore in the assessment. And and if you have ideas about where you think those would be most helpful, we'd love to hear that.
Less probably something for this meeting, but yes. I guess the big, the biggest thing, though, you know, form based code is 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 one way you would change or add other options than a point system. Right? So to me, there's just, there, there's ways that in to me, the easiest way to that we have a more robust use of prescribed forms in the code without making it really hard to administer is giving carrots, basically, to to things that we recognize are good traditional development use in Santa Fe, particularly in that our eight to our twenty one sort of window. I I think you get where I'm going, right?
I do, but that's an interesting discussion because form based codes by definition are prescriptive. And they tell people what they they say this is what we want. And in a lot of places like Santa Fe, you value uniqueness and diversity and character. And people don't necessarily want that descriptive approach. They want a more free form. And so that's what we find in a lot of places. And I, so I think that, I think balancing that. And maybe it's, you know, you've got, if you opt into a form based, then it's carrots.
That description of Santa Fe would be new to me, that people want things free form, that that's interesting. But but perhaps that's a semantic thing and we don't. But just for me, if it was a carrot, simply recognizing that there's certain, for instance, a square compound is really there's a lot of history there, works within a certain scale. There's an incentive that kind of use where you get a kicker, you know, density, because that would be a form based code. It just wouldn't be a blanket.
Oh, my, yeah, maybe the reverse word, use the word reform is is over broad, but what I'm trying to say is that we heard a lot of people say they're tired of being tied down by traditional Santa Fe design rules. And they want more flexibility and creative freedom. So that's what I was trying.
Thank you.
That's a great conversation. That one of the reasons we're so looking forward to phase two is that I think it's going to be a lot of really interesting communities for the community to reengage, those kind of big items. Because I think it's been intimidating, you know, to reopen some of that stuff. Because this idea of after fourteen is such a bear, you know, it's a man. Like we're saying, you know, that's its heart. People are just, there's a lot of third rails there. And I I think with these working groups and with this phased process, we are setting a stage tentatively to some of those third grids, maybe have a good conversation. I'm not going to solve them all.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of comments. First, I I appreciate that you pointed out that you are doing some ongoing wordsmithing of the affordable housing incentives. Personally, I don't think there's a need to bring them up tonight. I think there are few venues less pleasant for wordsmithing than this one. And but I I'm, I will look forward to looking at them before we see this again later this fall. The other thing that I just wanted to sort of make a statement about on the record, because it affects the procedures of this body, is that there is, as part of these potential changes, that the removal of the long range planning subcommittee as one of the committees of the planning commission. And as I understand it, that was a recommendation from staff. It hasn't been used in quite a while. I am in general okay with that change because I do think we have the ad hoc committees, which have served us quite well and give us what I think is potentially a more nimble approach to being able to address different policies and consider the different needs of the city as they come to us. But I didn't want to let that go by as a change that was made without us addressing it on the record. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wieland.
So in your analysis on the parking, we're, growing up here, I've learned that we are very much around a car based society. So when you said you were comparing us to other cities or states, where are you pulling your comparison from?
Well, that's a great point. We haven't started those direct comparisons yet. And and one of the conversations we'll be having probably with your staff is is just about pure communities and which which ones should be the basis of comparison? Where do you think? And I think there are going to be some, I don't know that there's good comparisons in New Mexico. We'll probably be looking at other tourist oriented places, maybe maybe like a Sedona, Arizona, something like that. But I I think we'll, we'll have to talk about what that basis of comparison is. Yeah, beyond that, you know, there's national standards out there. And there's, there's a, there's a little bit of art and there's a lot of guesswork, you know, in these, in these parking connections. And the engineers have come up with what they think should be minimums. We can also, you know, do a best practice or best pure community study. In the end, we'll also just want to get anecdotal information, we all and the community about where they think the problems are or how they think those should be approved. And in my experience, the the changes to the parking regulations are kind of a agglomeration of all this. But they all seem to be going down. If you've got a place that's very heavily touristed or climate, like a, like a palm desert, you know, where you'd have extremely hot weather and and people need to drive everywhere, that's a, that's a different situation. For the most part, people are still driving or not driving as much, I should say.
Well, you bring up an example there. I mean, we have four seasons here and yeah, during the winter months, I don't see how we're going to see as many bike riders or things like that during our winter months, where parking again comes into question. So hesitant to pull away quickly and then realize we might have made a mistake ten years ago. Road, we might be ten years ahead of where we should.
That's why a lot of places, you know, experiment with parking changes in target areas, but not the whole city to see how it goes. It's a good, it's a good thing to experiment with before you go.
I'm sure.
Yes, go ahead.
Yep. Just on the parking, has there been any discussion about the use of or recommended use of of software? Analytic software to figure out the parking situation like, I think, Google Streetlight would be one example of that where, I mean, there's a price tag to it, but they essentially track everything.
Not that I'm aware of, but you you have to talk to the public works office, you'd have to talk to the planners. It's, yeah, it is, it's out there, it's fascinating stuff. And it's led to proposals like for congestion pricing in some places like New York. But I I don't know of any conversations in Santa Fe so far on that.
Commissioner Miranda, members of the commission, I I believe that it will be part of the general plan, at least some level of analysis for parking and mobility. I'm not exactly sure what tools or level of detail they'll be going into. I know there has also been previous studies of parking counts in the city and the public, well, the parking department has an active count of both public spaces and city controlled spaces. And and they're actually, I think, working to add some new technologies for that. So there's, there's movement around that. But I would say that's probably more something that's happening in the general plan. And then maybe can inform phase two and three when we come back to the parking standards. And while I'm speaking, I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Ryan's comment as well. Just as a reminder, when we're talking about parking requirements, we're just talking about requirements. We're not saying that the parking is going away. In a lot of cases, lenders will not lend if you don't have a certain amount of parking. And so there, you know, there are still a lot of reasons why people will create parking. This essentially is allowing the market to decide what is the amount of parking for a certain context. And the tools that we've provided in phase one are allowing new flexible, tools of flexibility that applicants can choose to apply or not. Sometimes applicants really want as much parking as they can because they feel like there's not enough on street parking nearby or something like that. But this flexibility will allow both applicants and staff to hopefully right size the parking a little bit more as we progress towards maybe changing those requirements altogether in phase two and three.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Point of order, Madam Chair, do we need to open it to public?
I'm sorry, well, again, when there's no one here, it's hard to do that. So we'll go ahead and open up the public comment section. Is anyone here from the public that would like to make a comment? Or anyone on Zoom?
Chair Clow, there are no hands raised at this.
As there are no hands raised on Zoom and as there's no one here physically present who wants to comment, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section. And now entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend the continued work on the revisions to the land development code.
Member McGee?
Yes.
Or Miranda?
Yes.
Member Smith? Member or Vice Chair Lawrence?
Yes.
Member Relands?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to staff communications.
One of the things that I would like to do, members of the commission, is introduce you to two new staff members. We're super excited that they are with us and part of our team. Claudia Keth is from California and is a landscape, registered landscape architect. And so she'll be bringing insight from a technical standpoint as well as working as part of our current planning team. How well Bruce Haber is a senior planner as well, and he is going to bring expertise to our team. He has previously worked in Idaho, and we were fortunate enough to get him here as well. So welcome to our new staff and we're excited to see them progress. And you will see them in the future before this commission.
That's good. And I hear you have more other staff too that's been hired.
Chair Clow, that is correct. We have staff both in historic preservation as well as in our building division. So we're making progress.
Any other staff communications?
One other item, Chair Clow, is that I sent an email to the boards and the commissions today regarding built in the past conference that's going to be held on November first. This is part of our series for, we had the Built for the Future meeting this past summer. And we're going to be having another meeting in the spring with a topic to be determined. If you have suggestions for for a topic or something specific that you want us to focus on, we would be happy to consider those suggestions. So we're going to have Sarah Bronnen, who is the Chair of the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions, as our keynote speaker. And we're going to have a facilitated discussion after some other other lectures regarding Opa Poga, which is the original settlement of Santa Fe that was part of what is now Tuskegee Pueblo and other presentations regarding the archaeological and historic districts ordinance. We have a facilitated discussion regarding how we see the future of the historic districts ordinance and what are the different items that we would like to see in phase two be addressed.
Sounds interesting. Any matters from the commission? I I do have a comment and I talked to Maggie about that. I I would suggest that more commissioners be on the special committees that are working on, that will be working on phase two. Just because it sort of felt really out of the loop. And I know that we need to be involved in making recommendations to city councils. So I think it makes sense. And and I'm not necessarily looking at perhaps as having a lot of opinions to give. But I think it's really.
But I think it's really important that um we move along with the project. So it isn't like all of a sudden at the end, ram job and a job where you feel like, you know, you've missed out and you really don't know what's going on. Doesn't work that well. So I would make that suggestion.
Thank you, Chair Clow. And um, we do have two committees, the Citizens Advisory Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee as well. Um, and would you like to have commissioner representation on both or is there a focus on one committee or another?
I would say on both.
Right, certainly. Um, so if people are willing to to serve, please do let us know so that we can put you on the the um email list and and scheduling for for those meetings. Also, Chair Clow, we had talked about the PC Policy Subcommittee meetings, and I think that fell by the wayside, I guess, just with the transition um between directors and the like. So um, would you like continued work as a policy subcommittee or would the commissioners be uh satisfied with having the participation on the two committees?
Well, you know, I think it's probably somewhat up to staff because I think what was decided was the the special project committee really needed guidance by staff on the projects. Um, and I think there was probably a shortage of staffing for that. I know that there are a couple of projects, um, outdoor dining, a couple of other projects that are in the work or that are being thought about but haven't started. So I think it's really, I mean, it seems this, the code rewrite. And the phase two is humongous task. And I don't know, you know, does staff have the ability now to focus on some of those other smaller projects?
Yes, Chair Clow, we will um reconvene the PC Policy Subcommittee so we can identify the most appropriate path forward. Just to assure that there's good communication and so we get your input.
Chair Clow and Heather, do you mind if I address this a little bit as well? Um, I just want to um, say, in in phase two and three, we are absolutely open to um reconfiguring the cog and tog as as staff and the commission and leadership feels fit. Um, I think one thing that we found helped uh with attendance is certain organizations sort of had a rotating roster of attendees so that, you know, maybe that they don't go to every single meeting, but somebody from their group does. And that way they can report back and feel like somebody's been in the loop. Um, so that may be an option for you all. I'm just giving an idea. Um, I think in general, I we should say it's an open door policy if you want to sit in on meetings, even if you're not technically on the committee. Um, I think previously there was a feeling that we needed to be a little more selective, but um I I think our feeling now is that the more participation, the better and some people can participate participate at certain times of their lives and not others. So just when you can be there, I think we're open to it.
I think we have to be careful, though, with the Open Meetings Act.
That's true. Yes, that was maybe one reason why we selected a few select members for each group. But um, I think that's relatively easy to manage as long as we kind of have an R H B P system.
So we can talk about it and figure out who's interested in doing what.
Thank you.
There would be a lot to be doing, the special project. And then also being on the cog or the top.
Yeah.
And the special projects consist of well, it consists of Peter and TJ because two of the other people left.
Well, and we did have a few subcommittee meetings that were specific to the code. And Janet, Chair Clow, I think you were there for a few of those. Um, maybe we could have had more and try to make that a a regular update. Um, again, lessons learned. Um, we could also make sure that we come here to planning commission more often and make sure you stay um in in the loop about um, regular wo- work done. Um, I think a lot of the work we did was pretty background work and maybe it was uh, we were trying to spare you from getting into too much in the weeds, but certainly in phase two and three. And as we progress with the general plan, um, you're going to have to be super in the loop and um keeping abreast of all of the substantive things that we're going to talk about.
Chair Clow, also, if I might add, so we had, um, like Mr. Goble mentioned, we had some great conversation with the general plan team. They were here this week to pick off the general plan process. We were working on the development of an engagement plan. And also there was collaboration between Clarion as and WSP, which is the general plan. And so we feel like there's opportunity for more collaboration. So the general plan is more policy driven, whereas um the land development code is regulatory. And a lot of the issues that have been brought up have been policy related, but can be a key issue in the land development code as well. So um, lesson learned, we will um be possibly we'll figure out how, figure out how to structure this, but bringing a couple of issues to the commission for um, your input, we will plan on doing that.
And as I understand it, um, I think the um there was a provision put in the rewrite that the planning commission would have like one meeting a month, but I think it's going back to the previous language, at least one meeting a month, because I really do think it's probably important to have a number of second meetings a month that are you know, sessions where we're kept up to to speed.
So, Chair Clow, that's correct. We, I don't think we ever intended to limit it to one meeting per month, but I think the language was unclear. So we made it extra clear that it was at least one meeting a month with the opportunity for more as needed.
So I can see us having a lot of, hopefully having a lot of second meetings.
Thank you, Chair Clow. We will definitely set the stage so that we are better informed.
Um, yeah, I was feeling like I was cramming for another exam. And I had nightmares one night.
Oh, no.
Yes. Mr. McGee.
Thank you. So um almost a week ago, last Friday, a few of us attended a planning commissioner training. Um, so that uh done by the American Planning Association Conference. And I just wanted to say that it was extremely informative. Um, and to thank you all for inviting us, letting us know about it. Um, I really enjoyed it and I look forward to future opportunities.
And Heather, um, I wrote down the names of those two books that they, the one was an ABA, American Bar Association book. I, and I tried looking on it out online. I couldn't find it, but I think we should try to get those two books for new commissioners to to hand out to them when they become a commissioner. I think it'd be helpful.
Great. I will make sure that happens and actually.
Did you write down the name? I did, but I might have thrown it out.
Okay, I I will follow up on that, but I'll order copies as well for the existing commissioners.
Commissioner McGee?
I have the names if you need them. And I also already have the planning commissioner's guide, so don't order one of those for me.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anything else? If not, we'll adjourn. Thank you.